Ally didn't do the usual hoot.
Oh, I've plugged it in awhile.
Okay.
I can unplug it.
So this is our new camera if you want to look behind you. We have 3D of everybody.
Oh my word.
Thank you. Just give it a minute to, we'll get started in just a minute. It looks like we don't have many people.
We have one, we have one attendee named Randy Britton on.
Perfect. So we'll give it another minute since we just opened the meeting. We'll give it another minute to get started.
Aren't you always here, Randy? Aren't you always here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Randy, I got you on. Inbound meeting ID.
Yeah. Andrea said that she thinks we're zooming for tonight's meeting, but you got on, right?
I opened the link.
I'll just tell her that you just opened it.
Oh, Mandy got on, right?
Well, we just updated the link on the website. The original link was broken for some reason.
I didn't change the link though.
I'm not sure of the link that Brenda just put up works on.
Okay. Well, that's the one I just had.
Well, we'll wait, we'll wait until we.
Ellen's on. Absolutely. Letting me launch. Is there a new link we need to put on Facebook?
I would copy the ones on the website.
I can do that. Okay. There you go.
Just in case. It's fun that Zoom can still give us trouble. It's refreshing that like all these years.
Well, I always like to figure out why though. I can't figure out. I can't figure this out.
They just changed like one little thing just to keep us all paying attention.
Did Andrea text you or?
She emailed me, but it was like, you want to try again from the link I'm going to.
Tell her to refresh.
Brenda, is your sound up? Just so we don't get off. Weird.
Okay, we have five participants.
Okay, perfect. All right, we're going to go ahead. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. So we'll call the meeting to order at 6:34. Thank you for joining us. We have more people in the room than I think we've had in awhile, which is exciting and some folks are joining us online as well. So thank you. We're going to start the meeting tonight with a public hearing. So we're going to open the public hearing for expending $50,000 from the school construction fund and $50,000 from the playground expendable trust fund. So the board, there's a memo in our board packet. And so this is the $50,000 to be withdrawn from the school construction fund, the latest balance of which is $79,653.22 and a request to withdraw $50,000 from the playground expendable trust, the latest balance of which is $50,982.62. This will go towards the March 1st, 2022 approved GBS grounds renovation and playground project that was indicated in the cost estimates. Anything else for that, Sydney, that you had for us for the?
No, just I have another slide with the actual language for the motion when it comes to that. But these were figures that were already calculated in the costs that were presented at our annual meeting. And we went over with one of the trustees today about it's not an actual withdrawal. It's just that, you know, that this is giving us permission to access those funds, basically. So the school construction fund was the one we talked about where the last time it was used was 2012. And they started some site work and then decided to hold off. And then the playground expendable trust is the one that was voted in by Warren just three years ago.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. So if there are any comments from the public, either here in person or virtually, please feel free to share those. Just a reminder, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments so that it can be read and be part of the record in order for us to read your comment or question.
I'm just going to open this in case there's anything in chat.
Perfect.
I'm still getting texts from people.
Is it just now or there's, she said she's heard from others.
You can assure them we're not doing anything too exciting. Yeah.
Tell them to refresh.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Yet. Refresh the webpage.
And we'll leave the public hearing open for a few minutes here. If there's any comments that come in, it will also give folks time to join us. We are in a music room. Does seem odd for it to just be quiet. I know, right?
Denise could provide us.
I'll put a tip gyro.
I'm retired. We haven't had any comments come in, right? Nothing in chat.
Okay.
I wouldn't give it a minute though because I think some people are still refreshing. Well, if your website was open before they made the change. No, if you had the website open. And here's no. Well, where did you get the link?
Oh, I don't know anything about Facebook.
Madeline says it says she needs a meeting. Facebook link that you just had on.
Alright.
That's what I'm using. I'm assuming Madeline's using the website. So I don't think she's a Facebook.
I got on the website. So we need to make sure that the link that's on the website that's working goes on Facebook.
I copied it directly from your Facebook, so I'm not sure why.
I got on though.
But you got onto the website, right?
Website, not on Facebook. Gives us time for our.
Public hearing to be open.
Public hearings.
If there's anyone that's joined us, the public hearing for the withdrawal from the school construction trust fund and the playground expendable trust is currently open. So if anyone has any comments about for that public hearing. That's working.
And I could get onto the website.
Is that the field trip?
That's just one time.
Okay, so we're going to leave the public hearing open for one more minute. If there's any comments regarding the expending from the school construction fund or the playground expendable trust fund. And these were outlined on March 1st, 2022 from that discussion and vote.
Nothing coming in on chat still.
Okay. And do we need to make the motion during the public hearing here or do we need to have?
We're actually going to, when we do the approval of the agenda, we're going to add that to the very beginning.
That's what I thought. Okay. All right. So we will go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. We had, didn't have any comments that came in for this public hearings. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the approval of the agenda. So we are going to add a new first agenda item, which is going to be the moving of the, or the expenditure of those funds. So we'll have that as our first agenda item. And we'll just bump everything down one. Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
As amended.
As amended, thank you. A second.
I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. Okay. All right. So our first agenda item is public participation. So if we have anyone with us that would like to participate tonight, now is the chance. Just a reminder, this is the board's opportunity to listen. So if there are questions that come up during public participation, if we're not able to address them quickly and you know, during this time, we will try to address them later on the agenda. If there are agenda items pertaining to the comments. If you do comment, please share your name and address so that we're able to have that in the public record before your comment. We have some folks in the room here with us who are welcome to speak. And then we have folks virtually, you're welcome to post comments in the chat for those to be read into the record as well. So we'll open public participation. And we'll be awkwardly quiet again. I think I know why everyone who's in the room is here. So I'm not. You are all welcome to participate and during public participation, if you had something else you'd like to share as well.
Nothing in chat.
All right. I don't see anything coming in. So we will go ahead and move on to our first agenda item, which will be addressing the items from the public hearing. And we have the wording for those motions. Rather than thank you for doing that, other than me stumbling through. Supposed to say.
There you go. And they're up on the screen in case any of the board members want to. We can put there.
Okay, so we would need a motion to withdraw up to $50,000 from TTF number 552, which is the school construction capital, capital reserve fund for the sole purpose of payments related to the approved GBS grounds renovation and playground. This fund can also be used for improvements to the property and grounds.
So moved.
Second, so I have a motion from Ed and a second from Leslie. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so the motion passes. And then we need a motion to withdraw up to $50,000 from TTF number 590 Grantham Playground Expendable Trust for the sole purpose of payments related to the approved GBS grounds renovation and playground.
So, second.
I have a motion from Denise and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so the motion passes. All right. Our next agenda item is additional recognition. So we have some folks to recognize tonight as part of our processes. We've been doing this year as a board of recognizing individuals within the school to thank them for what they have brought to us, especially during the last year, two years. As things have been challenging and different and creative sorts of ways. So tonight we are thanking some of our folks who tried to get away from us, but we didn't let them. So to our retirees who have returned to help us this year, who they retired and they have been a ploy for them to get like a whole lot of love last year and like make people really sad to see them go. And then they just kind of snuck back in, which we were so happy to have them come back. And so I'm sure Sydney and Kristen have more that they would like to share on that.
Well, just, we would not be able to do this without you, but I did want to think of a quote for you tonight. And I found one that I thought was perfect, which is Michael Jordan, who said, I'm retired 99.9%. Of course, there always is that point one percent. So thank you for being our point one percent and giving us your time and your absolute continued caring for all of our GBS kids and families this year. We really, you saved us. Thank you.
Thank you. I echo that. And I will say I did not formally prepare anything, but the only thing I have for you guys is huge hugs because I so appreciate you.
It's really Kristen's fault.
So for folks who are at home, Mrs. Wallace and Mrs. Canning were able to join us tonight so that we could say thank you to them. So thank you both so much. There are two retired educators in my family, neither of which have ever gone back to the schools that they taught at. And they had like very firm lines and held those lines. And so I think it's very admirable. And we just thank you so much.
I was in Ecuador. Kristen's texting me. I'm trying to sub for us. I'll be back, I'll be back.
GGS is an amazingly special place and it kind of sinks into your heart and you can't stay away.
It's true.
Well, thank you both so much. And to Mrs. Larrabee as well.
Yes, who is traveling right now.
I also love that they are the, they were the least hesitant to be like, we got our stuff, go and say goodbye. And we are, we didn't even have to open the door to say you don't, don't feel that you need to stay.
We were in the same breath of saying, I can't stay away.
Yeah. Yep. All right. So thank you to our recent retirees who we see back in our halls. We love it.
I'm so lucky.
All right. So our next agenda item is our students' school board liaisons. And we have Seth and Ellen. So Seth, thank you for joining us again. And I think Ellen is joining us.
Online.
Online. Perfect. Okay. Um, so Seth, if you want to just give us, you know, any updates, if anything has changed or if there's been anything that's happened since the last time you were here, we'd love to hear from you.
Okay, well, since the last time, I spent like a couple of months since like, there's been no masks in school. So I'd say like, only about 5% of students are still wearing masks. Like it's very low. And everything is like officially like normal again. Like they're not letting kids like eat in random places in the school. Like you have to like, you know, eat in the cafeteria and like, we're back to normal tables. You know, you don't have like the plexiglass dividing and like the weird six feet where it's like, you try to break the rules and like, no, 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 you guys actually have to stay apart. And then we had prom like this weekend. So that was great. I mean, nothing, nothing was special about that. I mean, like, nothing special as in like a good way. And I don't know, besides that, if you guys have any like questions or things, if you have to ask me. I'd be open for that. And also I'd like to say, Mrs. Wallace somehow remembered me. I didn't even have her. I had Miss Miss Atherton. I have no idea how she did that.
She knows everyone.
She does.
How's it feel? We're almost graduating. We're getting close.
Oh, yeah.
Any questions for Seth from the board?
So after the summer, you're UNH bound, right?
Yeah, I'm going to be joining Allison at UNH.
That's awesome.
Thanks.
Just drive down and get it.
That's where I went.
Nice.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
Is she happy about that?
Oh, yeah. No, we're both like, you know, really good siblings. Like, I probably wouldn't be going there. You know, I had some disputes with Allison.
They are really good siblings. She probably didn't need a really big vehicle to get two kids stuff down there.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fair. We probably will have to take two. But we can just like keep walking.
Nice tip is don't let your parents go up the stairs with the heavy stuff.
Thank you. And Ellen, we haven't seen you in a couple of months. So we'd love to just hear from you how things are going. If there's any updates. Yeah, you have on our screen in front of us, there's this like bar of sunshine right over you. So you're you're in sunshine in our, are there any updates or things that you'd like to share with the board, especially, you know, as we sort of, as Seth talked about, as things kind of transitioned to back to like more of that quote unquote, normal feeling. Is there anything that's happened that particularly stands out to you or that you'd like to update the board on?
Yeah, I mean, after we talked about it with the mask, it's been a couple of weeks on. And I still wear a mask just because I don't want to get sick before AP season, but I think after my last AP, which is tomorrow, I will start transitioning to take my mask off. I guess it's nicer also because we can be outside more because it's getting warmer. Great. It's going to be so warm this week. I'm very excited. Also, graduation, which that's coming up as well for the people who are graduating. I think that's probably going to be a more normal ceremony as it has been in the past. And there's something new. Spanish Honor Society has been formed. And people will be inducted in a couple of weeks, I think. And Seth already talked about prom. And that also felt more normal. And also they were able to hold the prom march, which they haven't been able to do in a couple of years. And that was held at the high school, which is pretty cool. So, yeah.
Good. Excellent.
Any questions from the board tonight?
I think the only thing is like, we're still just low on bus drivers. My physics teacher would like to drive the test and the bow or match. Make a short bus for us. Doesn't have a full CDL, but in a word.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you both. I think we don't have, I don't have any other questions. The board doesn't have any other questions. We appreciate it. As always, you're both welcome to stay for as much of the meeting as you'd like to.
No, Seth, what night is graduation? Because I'm wondering if this is actually your last meeting or if you will join us in gym.
Well.
Because I don't know if it.
Could be conflicting is like there's a class trip that day. That might be next Tuesday, but like, you know, could get rid of that. I don't know. Like last year's got written out for a day and it was pushed to Wednesday.
Just let us know.
Okay. Yeah, this, this might be my last one.
Have you recruited another liaison for the school board to take your place?
I should. Yeah, you're right. That's one of my friends. Yeah, maybe like a junior, but I mean, then both Ellen and you do it. Find someone younger for you.
A sophomore.
Yeah. You can tell them that it's not too scary. We promise. All right. All right. Thank you. Our next agenda item is the audit. So I will turn things over to Sydney, Karen and Karen. So Tyler is here. He's from Clodzik and Sanderson, and he will give us a little bit of an overview of the audit.
Yeah, it's nice to be in person with everybody this year. My name's Tyler Payne. I'm a manager with Clodzik and Sanderson. I've been doing strictly municipal audits for almost 13 years now. Time has flown by pretty quickly. So I'm just here to do a brief presentation, overview of the financial statements, hit the high points and kind of give you expectations for the future, what could potentially change in the audit process and the overall financial report. So I'm going to give you direct references to what I want to draw your attention to. So if you want to follow along, feel free. I'm going to start things off on page one. Page one and two are the independent auditors report. That's the overall result of the audit and the most important part of everything. Additionally, we kind of, as a requirement, we highlight management's responsibilities for the financial statement as well as our responsibilities as authors. And then the opinion paragraph, the third or fourth one down is the overall results. And essentially the school district received unmodified opinions in all opinion units, which is the best possible result they can receive. Furthermore, there was no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we would report that were identified. Otherwise, those would be in the back of the report in a separate letter called the management letter and nothing that was grossed that occasion. Overall, there was government accounting standard orders always throwing curveballs at us, you know, changing ways things are reported and displayed. There wasn't anything too significant this year. GAZB 88 was implemented, but realistically only changed the way long-term obligations, bonds or notes were labeled. So kind of an insignificant pronouncement. So I'm not really going to go into any further detail in what I just provided you. So that was the overall results. The next page I'm going to bring you to schedule one, that can be found on page 44. This overall in the report, I'm going to go over three different presentation bases of account. The first is the budgetary basis. This is how the school district tracks their information internally. This is how the board receives their information for budget first actual review. And additionally, this is how the information is provided to the state of New Hampshire for the DOE 25 financial report. So overall, there was a budgetary surplus in revenue of about $126,000, mainly due to some unanticipated local source revenue and a change in the funding formula of the CAFE. Typically, the state of New Hampshire, when the tax rates are being set and all the budgetary documents are being finalized, they haven't always had the formulas for education aid complete at that point. So there was a little bit of a tweak in your favor after the fact of the tax rate and the budget being set. Conversely, on page 45, schedule two is going to be the budget first actual expenditure review. And as you see, there's savings all across the board. And I'm sure you know better than I what those savings relate to, you know, mainly COVID driven. I would expect, you know, services were a little different than they were intended to be as far as how they were budgeted. And again, this is again, the, the monof, excuse me, the budgetary basis of account. Now, this next page on page 46, schedule three, one of the most useful pages of our audit report from the school board or the business office is the overall changes in your unassigned fund balance. So the school district opened up with 125,623 of unassigned fund balance. They reduced the school district assessment by within a dollar, just a rounding error there between what was submitted for, for for your internal purposes and what we had presented in the audit. Additionally, there was $50,000 that was likely committed to be transferred to the capital reserves that use a surplus. The reason why that number, that $50,000 isn't in the top unassigned is because for our audit standpoint, because the action was taken by the board prior to the end of the year, we have to show it as committed fund balance and not unassigned fund balance. So it's not as if you use more fund balance than you truly had. So that's just wanted to highlight that as well. Now beneath that, you'll see the budgetary summary. Those figures are coming directly from the two previous pages I directed you to the the revenue surplus and the unexpendative balance, the appropriations for an overall budgetary surplus of about $543,000. And then the last section is any, any changes in your other fund balance categories directly relate or directly affect your unassigned fund balance. So you see the, the committed fund balance decreased by $50,000. So that in turn increased the unassigned fund. So the school district closed with about $543, $391 of unassigned fund balance at year end. Considering that they had voted to use to reduce the tax rate and for funding appropriations about $200,000, I would say that would be a positive, positive year at the end of the year. So that is it for the budgetary basis of accounting. I'm going to bring you to the modified accrual basis. So that is it for the budgetary basis of accounting. I'm gonna bring you to the modified accrual basis. Very similar for school districts, really the only change is we for a previous accounting standard, Gatsby fifty-four, required to report the expendable trust funds and capital reserves within the general fund as one standalone fund. So a page I would direct you to next. It's I didn't highlight it. I'm sorry. Bear with me for a minute. Page twenty-four and twenty-five, it's kind of just a quick summary of the overall changes in the revenue and expenditures from that budgetary basis, schedule one and schedule two I previously referred to, to how it's presented on the modified. So on page twenty-five at the top, you'll see the total revenue per exhibit D1. It's gonna be very similar to what you see on schedule one for the revenues, but overall, the changes were just due to the interest income on the investments of the expendable trust and capital reserve funds. Then on the bottom section, the expenditures, the overall change was the general fund transferred fifty thousand dollars to the capital reserves and spendable trusts. Since they're one standalone fund, we can't have that fund transferring money to itself, so that activity is eliminated for the purpose of the financial statements. So that's why you're seeing that fifty thousand dollars being canceled. So let me bring you to the modified accrual statements now. Getting myself all tied up here. Exhibit C1 on page thirteen. This is the balance sheet for the modified accrual basis and the fund financial statement presentation. So as I mentioned before, the general fund is combined with the expendable trust and capital reserves, mainly in that intergovernmental receivable, that eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, fifty-one dollars. Eight hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars is made up of your expendable trust and capital reserve funds. It's reported as an intergovernmental receivable because you don't technically have custody of those funds. They're held with the town trustees of trust funds. So that's why it's reported like that. And you'll see the grants fund is reported as a separate fund. We consider that a major fund based on a certain threshold. It was ten percent or more of the overall school district's assets, liabilities, revenue or expenditures. All it has to do is meet one of those thresholds and is presented as a major fund separately. So the revenue and expenditures on the modified accrual basis, you can find that on page fifteen, exhibit C3. And the other governmental funds column, those are all the non-major funds that did not meet the criteria of major funds that I just stated earlier. We do provide detail of those as well. Those can be found on page forty-six and forty-seven, schedule four, schedule five. Making up your food service, your after-school program, your outdoor classroom and the student activity funds of GBS. So I'm not really gonna go into any further detail on schedule four and five, but I just wanted to direct you to that in case you're wondering what makes up those balances. All right, the last basis of accounting, just to make things confusing here, is considered a full basis. This is more in line with what you see in businesses in the corporate world. So essentially, uh, on page eleven, exhibit A, is the statement net position or similar to a balance sheet of the, what's called the governmental activities. So this takes all the funds from C1 and C3 rolled up into one fund. Or one column, I should say. And then it combines or adds your long-term assets and the long-term liabilities. So for assets, your capital assets. For long-term liabilities, it is your bonds payable and your, your obligations to report the liabilities associated with the New Hampshire retirement system pension and other post-employment benefit, uh, programs. So those make up a significant chunk of your liabilities there. I didn't have it highlighted, but if you wanted to see further detail on the liabilities, a lot of people do want to see the changes in those figures. Those can be found on page twenty-seven, note eight. And just as you can see here, these, these liabilities, especially the pension and the OPAD liabilities, those are beyond your control as a school board and school district. Those are a snapshot of actuarial calculations based on the retirement system's current standing of their investments and their projections of what they have to pay out in the future. So as you see here, nothing done on, in, on your side, but your liability for the pension went up about one point five million dollars from three point five to a total of about five million dollars. So I'm gonna go back to the full accrual statements. On page twelve is exhibit B, and that is the, the revenue and expenditure, uh, presentation or call the statement of activities. This takes a different approach to how the revenue and expenditures are, are presented. And it, it tries to show how program-specific revenues, how they're doing to offset the overall cost of a department or a function. So it lines up your charges with, for services and your specific operating grants or capital grants against the functions that are benefiting from those revenues to see how they're funded before any general revenues, mainly the school district assessments and the adequacy aid from the state of New Hampshire is used to offset those. See if there's anything else I want to cover on that page there. No. So we do also provide reconciliations to show how the fund financials are transitioned to the governmental activities or the modified accrual to the full accrual basis. Those can be found on page fourteen, exhibit C2. That takes the, the total fund balance of all the funds per exhibit C1 and shows all the changes between the capital assets, the long-term liabilities to come, come down to how it calculates the total net position that you see on exhibit A on the financial statements. And then additionally, on page sixteen, this shows of how, how net income, but your change in fund balance, it shows that how it transitions into your change in net position. So again, the number is coming directly from C3 and it shows all the various impacts of all the liability, changes in your liabilities and the other related balances to the New Hampshire retirement system, which are further inflows and outflows of resources and capital assets as well to come down to that. To summarize things, uh, overall, smooth audit process in your second and, second year in at this point. Uh, again, I, I mentioned there was unmodified opinions on all opinion units, no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses internal control. So I would say very positive audit results from our standpoint. Looking forward to financial statements of the future. I'm, I'm not sure what exact pronouncement it is that's going to impact the opinion letter, but essentially, they're gonna reformat it a little bit. The opinion, that paragraph that I referred to, which is about fourth down, is now going to be at the top and they're kind of shifting things around. Yes. And then there'll be Gatsby eighty-seven, which will be applicable to your fiscal year end, June thirty, twenty twenty-two. More reporting change in our ends to, to be mindful of. It's going to impact how what was previously labeled capital lease or operating leases, rental leases, they're now going to be reported in the financial statements as capital assets right to use as they refer to and liabilities in the future. So we're currently working on some templates to assist our clients in kind of identifying these things and giving us the right information so that we can, you know, help report disclosed information. All right, my last thing here, just want to say congratulations to Karen, uh, for their on and off for over twelve years. Now, who works? My first year as an auditor when I was very young and green, in back two thousand nine.
Don't tell on that.
You know, she has a pleasure work with that. You guys had that still of a, of a business administrator work the past few years.
Thank you, Tyler.
So I just wanted to open up to any questions that we might have on financial statements or anything like that, because I know I speak kind of quickly. Slow me down and back me up just a little bit.
You can just make it sound so simple. We know it's not.
It gets easier to do these presentations.
If you do it right.
Yes, exactly.
Any questions from the board?
Have a good night, everybody.
And we do need a motion to accept this report, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept the, um, annual financial report for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And opposed, say nay. Okay. Thank you. All right, so our next agenda item is, um, uh, welcome to some of our new hires and also, um, the board will take action just to acknowledge and affirm that these, um, hires have been made. So we'll say hello and welcome first.
Yes, so welcome to Meredith Butler. So, um, it's great. Actually, Meredith will be our new business administrator and it's just wonderful. She can be here the night that the audit is presented. It's a perfect segue. So, uh, welcome to Mer- welcome Meredith Butler to Grantham School District.
Thank you.
Welcome. And I actually think, um, Mickey McGee is our other welcome for our director of student services, and I think she is away this week. She was gonna try and zoom in, but she did say there wasn't a definite guarantee of internet where she was. So, um, we will virtually, and it's recorded, so we can say watch it when she joins us. And, um, we're happy, very happy to have both of you join our team next year.
Great, welcome.
Okay, so, um, we'll need a motion to, um,
affirm.
Affirm. That's the word I was looking for.
Affirm the nomination.
Affirm the nominations. Should we do them separately or can we do them together?
Okay.
So we need a motion to affirm the nominations for business administrator and director of student services?
Yes.
So a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And opposed, say nay. Okay. All right, so our next agenda item is a clarification on a date for, this was a vote that was taken, um, previously, and we just need to, um, clarify, uh, the date that it references. So there's a memo in this, in our board packet about this. So, um, it's the encumbrance of up to fifty thousand dollars for expenses related to the pavilion project. So the minute state that the year was twenty twenty-one, but we need to clarify that the encumbrance will come from this year's funds, which will be the twenty twenty-two fiscal year.
Yeah, we just have to put, they'll go back and then look at the minutes, um, when they're auditing again. So we want to make sure that the minutes are accurate.
So we need a motion to, um, clarify that we will encumber up to fifty thousand dollars from the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two unexpended fund balance for pavilion costs. Second, okay, so a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. Okay. Excellent. All right, our next agenda item is for the clerk of the works position, and this is a nomination that's being brought forward for that position.
Yes, I would like to nominate Emily Owens for clerk of the works for the GBS grounds renovation and playground project. Um, she is the unanimous choice of our search committee and we'd be very lucky to have her on board.
And there's a letter in the board packet, um, from Emily, um, for her, um, interest in the position. Do you have any questions or discussion about that from the board?
We haven't met her, haven't we? She's come to a couple of meetings.
Yeah, and she is also our district clerk.
She's our clerk.
Yeah.
Okay. So she was at the annual meeting, but very busy.
Any, any construction background?
Yes, yeah. So she has project management background in construction.
With any construction?
Was it septic installation, I think?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, septic installation, industrial septic installation and some other things as well.
Five million dollar projects.
Yeah.
How long would she be in this position as a clerk of the works?
Until the, um, until the renovation is complete.
Okay, it could be two years.
It could be two years. Yeah, so whenever it starts and whenever it finishes, the board had previously approved up to seventy-five hours. So we're gonna start with that and see where we are and then, you know, see if it's less or more.
Any other questions or discussion? I guess we'll need a nomination to, um, accept the nomination of Emily Owens for the position of clerk of the works.
So good.
Second, I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, unless you're passes. Okay, our next agenda item, um, is lock bids, which I was like, which bids are we locking? And then I was like, oh, bids for locks. So we're looking at, um, bids for our locking system, our security system here for the building.
Yes. So this went out to bid because it is over our ten thousand policy, um, for bidding. We received five good bids, good viable bids, which is great right now. Uh, we had the, all vendors agree that the work had to be completed prior to August thirtieth. And we had a rubric that was based on the firm and company description, the equipment quality and compatibility with our facility, remote access was a must. With an app, the quality of the bid itself references cost and the ability to complete work with summer timeframe. Our recommendation to the board is that we contract with one source and, um, I included their proposal in your packet. The flat rate for the work is fourteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars with an annual recurring system fee, which is mostly for the tech side of it and the app of seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-two cents.
Any questions on this? On their submission or on the bid that was brought forward to us?
And I'm assuming this is the preferred company for our facilities?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we had, uh, there were five of us reviewing the bids and then it also went through director of technology to make sure all the technology was gonna align with everything. So this is the the preferred choice of everyone. The range of the bids, in case you're interested, went from fourteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five to twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-eight. That was the range of the five. And this is the best choice for GBS.
And they can get it then before school starts again.
Any concerns with them for like any, I know this is like, everyone's sick of these words, but any concerns about supplies?
So they're gonna be using our hardware, which is part of why their bid was so strong. So without having to get new hardware, that's gonna save things. Randy said that the technology should be a pretty easy installation with the, where they need to put the panel and tie everything in. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
I think the physical installation is not that difficult for them because it's basically, uh, it's RFID sort of type technology. The advantage of this particular vendor is that they have the ability to do that using other digital certifications through your phone. So like near field stuff like with your Apple Pay type thing. So, uh, they also have, it's, it's all largely hosted, so you can do remote locking and unlocking from appropriate people. It's really pretty slick system.
And so Kristen and Toby don't get calls at, you know, eleven that something's not locked, you know, and they have to have somebody drive in. They can have access at home and lock and unlock anything they need to.
No concerns with them using the existing equipment and that becoming obsolete?
No, no, we checked on that.
Actually, less so than some of the other bits because their technology is much more forward looking than some of the other bits.
Okay, so we need a, um, motion to, uh, accept the bid from One Source, is that the name of it? Motion to accept the bid that was brought to the board for the GBS locking system from One Source. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. Okay. We are looking at after-school program stipends, and we have a memo in our board packet about this. And this is looking at both the need for childcare and also the, um, challenge of hiring right now. So let Sydney speak more in depth on this.
Well, I think Mrs. Reed and I will both agree that we would be very excited to have Creative Kids Adventures partner with us. They've come in to do a tour of GBS. I've met with them, Mrs. Reed has met with them. It would be, just be a really great partnership. The challenge, as we all know, is gonna be hiring. Um, it's gonna be really difficult to staff anything in that field right now for childcare, before school, after school, et cetera. So my, we started to talk about this and my suggestion would be that from our after-school program surplus that we offer for up to four longevity stipends of twelve hundred dollars each for a maximum forty-eight hundred dollars. For people to work in this program. And the way it would work is that at the end of each trimester, any person who is, um, working with us and hired gets a bonus check for four hundred dollars. So there's incentive to be hired and incentive to stay.
And we only need four?
I don't know if we might need more than four. I think four is a good place to start, and then we can also discuss if we need something else going into some of our S R funds. We haven't had extensive conversations about what we would want to do with our remaining S R funds, which is around fifty thousand dollars. So we could go into those if we feel like we need to add another stipend or think of some other, you know, incentive for hiring. or think of some other, you know, incentive for hiring or staying.
It's kind of a good problem if you need more, hopefully you can get them.
Yes, unless they just stay the first trimester and then leave, but let's not think about that. That's right.
I would be interested to hear the board sort of discuss the pros and cons and what we think about the use of longevity stipends versus hiring bonuses versus both. Because I think in order to, to use the longevity statements, we have to get people hired. And I know a lot of places around here are using hiring bonuses right now, and so what is the, and I know that what we need is people who will come and who will stay, but we need them to come aboard first. And so I'd just be interested in hearing, and I know that's something that, you know, Sydney has thought about too. And so if you have thoughts on that, please feel free to, to share them as well. But I'd just be interested in, in hearing the board discuss how we can kind of best use these funds that we do have.
I would assume if you did a bonus, a sign-on bonus, you would need to be here a certain amount of time to work the best.
Well, that's more of the longevity bonus.
Well, if you do a sign-on bonus and then leave, a week after you pay it. I mean, I, I don't, I'm not aware of too many sign-on bonuses that don't come with some period of time, like 30 days or, you know, whatever it would be. So I'm half wondering if you, if you don't offer
what we call a sign-on bonus.
A sign-on bonus of additional $400 that would be paid out after the first trimester along with longevity. So that first payment coming out would be 800. After that, you'd get 400 each trimester going forward.
It's, it's like marketing, basically, talking about some similar fund, but the way, what we call it.
Yeah, you're going to, you're going to pump this up a little bit. So 1,200 would be 1,600 per person. You know, so you're looking at extra $1,600 to do it. But I think if you could use the care to get them in the door and that first payment be double what the other ones are going to be.
Which would also come right with the holidays, which we need. I think Seth wanted to talk about for something.
Is the main issue that like they don't have anything during the summer, they just work for like the three trimesters of like the school year? Is like that why they wouldn't stay? Because like.
I, I mean, personally, I think it's, I don't think there's enough work, you know, unless you're looking for someone very specific who's looking for 10 to 12 hours a week of work, I don't think money's there to.
I know we're markets looking tight, Seth, like.
Yeah.
It's just they were trying to.
And it's. Yeah, and it's really high turnover in, in that field right now.
Yeah.
So childcare, after-school care is really high turnover right now.
There's like some sort of summer thing that like, you're around. Having a search for summer.
We always need people for summer school.
Yeah. What, have we looked at bumping up the hour rate?
So that wouldn't be up to us, so that, you know, if we're partnering with CKA, that's going to be their decision.
So how, how would we give these funds out if they're not going to be our employees?
These are quite literally just stipends to be hired in the program.
Wouldn't we have to funnel those through our partner?
We would not.
So we would get a W2 from their daycare center and a 1099 from us?
Unless you see it working differently, Karen, or Meredith, either.
They wouldn't be our employees, so it would have to be a 1099.
But I'm not sure they'd be on independent contractors for us either.
Right, that's true.
I, I think you're, you're going to have, you're going to have to funnel it through.
So one, one check to CKA.
And they would, they would distribute it out, which means if we're looking at doing that, you know, there may be some, maybe I'll have some discussions around what they're offering for paid for.
I would be hesitant to go into offering hourly rate because we would be really entangled long-term. You know, in terms of their business model and their survival, and, you know, we would be looking at the school having to subsidize them like forever if we're upping their hourly rate, do you think?
Well, no, wouldn't that, wouldn't that?
Did you mean hourly rate or, or the stipend?
No, I'm talking, I mean, that, wouldn't that be covered through the aftercare school fees that we're charging? Or whatever our partners are going to charge. They're going to charge. Yeah, I mean, there's certainly ways to, to look at that, but I think the stipend, the stipend, I honestly think both, sign-on bonus, payable after the first trimester, and then the longevity on top of that makes a lot of sense. Let me figure out the mechanisms of it, you know, how we get the money to them after. I'm sure if you, yeah, you pay them.
Makes sense.
It would be slightly more than that for us because all it is payroll taxes. Stuff as well that they're going to have to cover. As part of it, but it would be in the general ballpark.
So you want to add $400 on as signing?
400 times four.
That's 6400 total program, start with.
And you said there's 8,000?
Well, we're estimating about that. We don't know, but we do have, you know, the ability to write this into S R in case we want to do that. So the way that I see it is, you know, this is definitely a community need, and this is our way of trying to help the community have a daycare option after-school program. We would still run before-school program, but it's the after-school program.
Who, who, how long do we have access to the, the S R funds? How many do we have to use them by?
23, the end of 23, I think it is, yeah.
So this, this would lose bias a year to see what the financial model looks like.
Right.
Buys them a year, I guess.
Okay, so we would need a motion to approve. Do you want to say up to? Do you want to give a up to 6400? I'm going to approve an expenditure of up to 6400 to, for after-school program stipends and stipends or sign-on bonuses. Does that make sense?
And/or?
And/or.
And/or, yeah, yeah, for what seems like, yeah.
So moved.
Second, all right, so I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. Okay, all right, our next agenda item are end-of-year events. So this is just information for the board of the events that are coming for the end of the year, our normal list of fun things. And so there's a memo in the board packet of things that are coming up. So we have all kinds of things.
We do.
You guys want to take us through it?
Sure, so we have some GBS end-of-year
Bye, Seth.
GBS end-of-year student family event, so Mrs. Reed and I are hoping to plan a welcome summer family picnic on June 14th. So we're working on trying to get some, hopefully some food trucks in, or maybe people bring picnic, picnic dinners that night. GPTG is going to have some games, just to have a fun, a fun community gathering. Sixth grade graduation will be June 15th, and from six to seven with a rain date of June 16th. And then our secondary students at Lebanon, we have the senior walk, which I know is one of everyone's favorites, which is tentatively scheduled for June 8th at 2 o'clock. Senior awards night is June 6th, and that will be 6:30 PM at the Lebanon Opera House. And then the high school graduation is June 9th at 6:30, and they are planning graduation outside, hopefully. Ian said that hopefully just a gentle rain and nothing more, so it will be good. And then school district end-of-year events for staff, I wanted to let you know and see if you're okay with the fact that our staff was really excited about the Son of Pete cruise again, and they have their new boat, which Mr. Britton helped launch.
Was that literally just a year ago?
It was just a year ago.
I'm sitting here like, was that five years ago?
But it, it was a resounding success, and so that was the, the majority vote of what we would do this year. We would do it as our Blue Ribbon Cruise. It is an increased cost from our usual end-of-the-year lunch by about close to $1,200. So I wanted to make sure that that would be all right with the board. And if it isn't, we can pursue another option.
I just ran the stuff, we had started the engines for the first time.
And how they sound.
They sounded great.
Purring.
Now we just have to get the runners working.
Yeah, it's going to be quite the cruise.
And, and we let Mrs. Wallace drive the boat, and then she came back and subbed. So I think it's a good, it's also a good, good.
Yeah, but we have some other people retiring who might want to drive the boat this year.
And then come back and sub.
You don't want me subbing.
I'll come back and help Meredith.
Yeah, right. We'll say no to that.
So do you need a motion to approve up to, it's not 2,400 bucks?
You don't really need a motion. I just wanted to be transparent about it and to see if anyone has any objection.
I'll come back and write something, make sure, can I go?
We had a board go last year, so yes.
What's up?
It's, yes, we did. Yes, the board went last year.
It was lovely. It was really nice. It was really happy.
And by the time we go, there might be an inside to the boat as well.
Two thousand will go cruising next week.
Wow, it was lovely last year.
Bring your own chair. And Karen just, Karen just wrote me a note just to follow up that S R 3 actually goes to the September 30th of '24. You've got a whole other year for it. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Okay, our next agenda item is the survey results that came in. There's a copy of these in the board packet. So hopefully everyone's had a chance to look through these, are there things you'd like to highlight for us or?
The one thing that I wanted to talk about is between the staff and the parent-family survey, there really does seem to be a recognized need for some kind of student support, mental health services, and as they're lacking. So I know that we hadn't talked about the social worker position staying on, but I think what I'd like to discuss is continuing some kind of S R funding for additional mental health services for kids and families. I'm not exactly sure what that would look like, but I think that that's still a need from what I see here. The other things that really stood out is distancing on both service, on both surveys. People aren't really interested in that three to six foot distancing anymore, and wanting to gather and have community events again were, were the big highlights. But overall, from both surveys, I was happy to see that, I think we're in a pretty good place. I think people seem comfortable with where we've been and where we're going overall.
Well, this is like the best time to bring it up, but it's something we talked about last meeting, which was the policy of testing and, because it's throughout this, you know, and it's not surprising, you know, we heard last meeting, but, you know, throughout this, the qualitative response is parents talking about what a burden it is to have to either come to school to get tested, et cetera.
Well, right now, testing is open to everybody and for symptomatic. So as long as, I know Sununu did put in for funding for that program for a whole other year, hopefully that continues. Did you want to see it change at all?
No, I'm just sort of raising it as, it's fair. But yeah, I think it's, I feel like it's better since we last met even.
Yeah.
Partly because we're changing it, but also the way that the things have progressed.
How is the work going on Karen? I'm opening up the room.
Um, she's hanging in there. She will tell us if she needs to say no. So she hasn't said no yet, and I know that we were a little concerned because the state put a hiatus on test supply until May 23rd. I think we have, hopefully enough, you know, you never really know, because right now we're in a level red again, and allergies are coming, which means more people are sniffing and she might be doing more testing. But the state right now in DHHS is hoping that they'll have another supply by May 23rd. So as long as we can make it till then, and that next supply comes in, we should be okay. But I can tell you that I think Karen would let us know if she needed to change something or if she needed to stop.
So if, just a hypothetical example of somebody has, already knows on Monday, they come in, they get tested. Karen gives a thumbs up, they come to school. We're not requiring them to test again on Tuesday, are we? At least they're already, it's a sort of a one-shot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the only time they would test again is if they actually had COVID, and they would do that by testing.
Or if a new symptom.
I'm just thinking of all the times you have to be so attentive, because when a kid is really sobbing, doesn't know. Is it COVID or are they just sad?
Our whole allergies and COVID swirl, it's really fun. Parents literally, I don't even know how many times he swatted his nose in the last two weeks or three weeks. Because he like, started with allergies, tested clear, then one of his best friend's brother got COVID and he was with that. Test, still clear, sore throat, like, and then we loop back around to the allergies, and then one more test, just it's all negative, but it's.
Yeah, we had a cold right through our house, and it was just, you know, test, test, test.
Yeah, you want to be careful.
All hypersensitive to it.
Yeah.
What were your thoughts on the survey, or did you have any questions for me or Mrs. Reed about any of the responses?
I just noticed there seemed to be more of a, I wondered if it was more of an increased comfort level with being able to choose between in-person meetings and Zoom. I wondered if it was like that pre-COVID, or have some parents just felt like, wow, this really works for us to be able to choose or?
Before COVID, we honestly didn't use Zoom. Everything was in-person, and what we found was for our meetings, we had a lot more parents participating, pretty much 100% parent-teacher conferences. And then I think what the board has found, more people come to board meetings because they can sit in their living room. So I think there's a real positive piece to that.
Especially for working parents. I mean, it's a huge benefit, not like lose a day of work.
Do during your lunch.
Oh, yeah, I mean, the world has changed in a very short amount of time where very few, there's much more hybrid solution now. You know, I think, I think it's important to keep that, those options available to the parents.
We see a lot more, a lot more meetings with both parents attending when they can. Yes, yeah. I will let you know that something we discussed at Adventine today is that Zoom is stopping their 40 minutes for free sessions for schools. So we may be charged at some point if we decide to do get some, if we decide to get some school instances.
Does Google need some of the task, Randy, or?
It's changed a lot from what it was.
Yeah.
I think it's sort of an open question whether it would be sufficient or not.
Yeah.
You know.
And we don't use any Microsoft products.
No.
We, yes, we do. And Meredith will too.
Teams, Teams has worked really well for, for us, but you know, we're on Microsoft suite, so.
Any other questions or comments from the survey?
A big part of this survey was really for the board to start thinking about that $50,000 too. So aside from thinking about maybe some bonus money for after-school program aside, no, I really do think some student and family mental health services would be good. Did anything else strike you in terms of where you'd like to leverage those grant funds?
I, my initial opinion on, on those grant funds would be, I think from a childcare perspective, you know, if I had to super rate them, I, I think I'm still for childcare above mental health services. I'd like to figure out a way to get both of them, obviously. But I think I would be, I'd like to make sure we have the childcare piece locked down first before committing ourselves to something that. before committing ourselves to something that then we end up being in trouble on the childcare side.
Yeah, I think childcare, the mental health piece, I think it, you know, it's, it might be not as much money, but if we do need to invest in some kind of platform, you know, if Zoom, like if we do need to pay for Zoom, it's like, I'm I think there the feedback is really clear that that has been a great option and and it has increased participation. So if we need to look at how to keep that as an option, you know, the technology available for folks to continue to be able to do you know, virtual meetings when they need to.
Yeah. And I don't know if you want to speak specifically, but we do need to earmark some money for some specific learning gaps and some content areas, you know, in terms of where we need to fill some gaps.
We do, and we've been talking a lot lately about just early literacy, but literacy throughout the grades and creating some continuity so that we don't have those gaps and we're looking at piloting the cafe. It's not a program. Structure next year with second grade and then hopefully moving forward with that in the future with that. And then we're also looking into math. Sam Hutchins is doing amazing things with Title One and really making it grow and and be part of our whole day versus just an after school club, so to speak. So we, yeah, we're doing a lot with with monies for for closing those gaps.
Any other questions or discussions from the survey? Is this available publicly at this point?
It's in the board packet, which is already public, but I can attach it to my newsletter as usual.
Yeah, yeah. I know that usually goes out. All right. Our next agenda item is the special education determination report card, and this is in the board packet.
And Madeline Prudhoe Burke is on with us tonight if you have some specific questions, but it's a great report card, so we don't have any follow-up measures from the state. There are a couple of things that Madeline and I discussed earlier in the week where we did get, you know, a two instead of a zero. And there are some that we think we can improve on and there are some that we think might actually be mistakes, but and some are very clearly pandemic related, but this is a new format from the NHED and it's meant to streamline all the regular special education reports that I'm constantly giving you, which doesn't mean that you won't get others because I got another one today. But I do like that they're working on a nice format for boards and for districts where I think this is a clear way to see all of this information, which would usually come in, I think, five or six different reports.
And this is district wide, correct? So this is encompasses GBS.
Right.
So our students at, is it, is it targeted for our students at LMS or LHS or our scores?
Because we're the LEA, so this is for all of our students who are on IEPs. So if you see any of the, you know, any of the scores on the report card that say, you know, parentheses eight, that's eighth grade in the middle school. If you see parentheses eleven, that's eleventh grade at the high school. Graduation dropout rates, those kind of things are our Grantham students on IEPs going through them.
So and so that would affect in terms of like aggregating a score, we have a really, for some of those, we probably have a very small number.
Right. So one student, for example, dropping out could cause us to not meet the target expectation from the state because are going to be so small.
That gives some good context for some of those.
Yes, definitely.
Do you need a motion to accept this?
Yep, we do need a motion to accept.
Some. No, that's okay. Before we could discuss it more. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. Was there any other discussion or questions on this?
You need to say the motion.
Oh, okay. So we need a motion to accept the special education determination report card.
Second.
Okay. Did you have any questions for Madeline?
All right. So we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right. Okay, our next agenda item is looking at, I'm just looking to see. Okay, our next agenda item is discussing and if there is need for potential action for a board letter thinking about if there is an interest on in terms of the board for responding to or having a voice in the conversation regarding the op-ed that was published by the commissioner of education in the state.
So I have met with staff as a group and I met with a few different staff members individually, just talking about it. And they're very mixed feelings about it. So some people feel that it's not worth a response that, you know, if you respond, you're giving it more attention. Some feel that there should be a response. Some feel that I can tell you, this is what I share this feeling is that I think the commissioner is interested in responses for press sometimes, but you know, but is there a way that the board wants to respond that isn't getting into that kind of back and forth with the commissioner, but really addressing some of the things that he stated about educators? Because I do know that, I do know that some, not all, but some of our educators were greatly offended by the op-ed that that came from our commissioner. Some, and again, not all of our educators feel intimidated about what they're going to teach next year. So it really is having that fear factor effect, which is really disheartening to listen to, especially from such an incredibly amazing group of educators. And I understand both perspectives. I certainly understand that sometimes you don't want to respond, right? But I don't know if the board would want to look at other avenues. One of the things that we discussed is the possibility of maybe addressing Governor Sununu directly and asking him to come to GBS as our blue ribbon, one of the two blue ribbon schools of excellence this year. And and coming here to see a great community public school and what we're about, you know, that that could be, could be an approach. So I think, I think the staff is very mixed. I don't know if I'm missing anything, some of the opinions that you and I have heard.
No, I feel you're right on. It was all over the board, whether we wanted to acknowledge or not acknowledge. And most of the people that I heard that wanted to acknowledge, wanted to acknowledge in the positive light, showing what we do. Right. Do that is is so positive where he's saying the negative.
Not giving into the negatives. We go high.
But I I personally have never been a big fan of responding to that. Also let him go. I mean, that's, but that's strictly my personal feelings. Yeah, I think you give more credence to it when you actually address it and.
I I found that it was definitely insightful for me because it points more where the Department of it seems to be leaning toward. And I'm not comfortable with a lot of this. We're, we're trying to raise kind children and inclusive children. And this is doing a lot to create a lot of division.
Yeah, I was really, it might seem like a weird, well, it's not a weird parallel, but I was really inspired by that. I think there was a Michigan State Senator who spoke up and in the most like respectful way, she didn't, she actually went really high and said, this is what I stand for. And I'm thinking of her, the way that she responded to some, some attack, a personal attack on her. And how, I mean, it was in a similar vein of standing up for all kids and, you know, regarding all families as worthy and so I'm, that's in my mind. I'm a little bit with you, Ed. On the other hand, Ben's pointing in our society where I don't think we can stand by anymore, especially in a little state like this, what's happening at the state level. I think more of us probably need to stand up and at least go high and say like, our values here in this school are this. And this is the good work that we do and we stand behind it a hundred percent in contrast to.
And I think that, I think, I think that's fine. I, I'm, I think it has more, it's more powerful coming from people individually than someone tied to a school.
So like a, you mean collective response?
Just private, I mean, when I, when I do something like that, you know, half of me thinks you know, there's a message there. It's orchestrated to a point. You know, it may not be completely coming from the commission. There, there may be other places where other people involved in it. You know, and I get in much better sense when private citizens that are speaking up and making that instead of people that are, you know, are sort of tied to one side of a debate or another.
One person on our staff Zoom had said something really similar, which was, you know, since the commissioner's op-ed was about destruction of family values, wouldn't it be great if the letter back came from our Grantham families? You know, I don't know how to coordinate that, but you know, to your point, you know, it's.
I, I have a very similar feeling, Ed, in terms of like, I always think there's, there's a point that you align, you can walk up to that like treads into that, like, let me think, the lady doth protest too much zone of like, I think the best thing that we can do is just to like keep doing what we do really well. And and I think that like the idea of inviting the governor to come and visit or something like that is is demonstrating that and and showing like we're, we're doing the work by just doing the work. I will say, I do think that there is a place, and this may be it, it it might just be in our meetings publicly and in the minutes to show that. I think one of the things that school boards can do right now, though, is to be very clear and to state their trust for their administrative team and their teachers. Because I think when we're in this very weird place where some boards are starting to put their toes into doing some of the work that should be, that they should have administrators and teachers in place to do. And that fifty thousand foot view that a board should be taking is starting to be more of the like, well, show me your material on this and show me like, that's not our place. And I don't think that this board has ever functioned like that. And I think that that's a testament to the fact that we hire strong administrators and teachers who we trust to teach in the way that is the most appropriate for our students. And and just sort of reiterating that our role as a board and the role of the commissioner and the department is to not do the work of stepping on the toes of the people who have the education and the expertise and what they're hired to do. And I think the more that we can make that, and I think that we do a really nice job of that, of of being clear about what our role is, what our administrators, what our staff's roles are. And like I said, and I, and I don't know if that's something that we need to say in a, you know, op-ed. It's just something that we can say during our meetings and that we can do in our hiring practices and in our the things, you know, the ways that we support our staff. And it, but I, I do want to acknowledge to our staff that I do understand that the commissioner and the Department of Education has put their credentials on the line and that is scary and horrifying. And I think, you know, I know that this board stands behind what is being done in these walls and that if we had questions and concerns about that, we would bring them forward. And if there were concerns within the community of those things, hopefully they would come forward to us and we would know about them.
I think we're in a place in our society as a whole, and this is my own personal opinion, where a district like ours is we are so, we work, we all work hard and we are also blessed to be like all of us a part of the GBS Grantham community, right? I feel like it's incumbent upon us as a district in that like blessed privileged position of health within our system to basically like stand up a little bit more and use our voice and be public. I mean, literally the next town over what has happened. And so it starts to just feel like it encroaches in, in, like, it's like looming against our walls in the state. And it feels to me like it's important to, because we're in a position of strength, we are pretty like united in our purpose. It's almost like standing up for those who have less, who have less of a privilege, for the districts who are more threatened than we are. Who don't come from that position of strength. And yes, it's only us expressing our support and like taking a public step to be supportive and explicit about our values. But there are a lot of things that are happening in our society that like if you are in a place of privilege and power, you should use it positively. Because the more that we stand behind, don't do anything, the press is closer and closer. Our state is a perfect example of that. So it is my personal opinion, but.
I did take a look at the PowerPoint that he presented and I didn't have the dialogue that went along with it. But I thought they were, I'm sure, groups of people that were very offended by his just taken out of context. And then there was a particular teacher who was using multiple pronouns with confidence and that was presented very publicly is not acceptable the eyes of this commissioner. And I thought, it isn't his place to judge this. And it's, it's excluding someone who has value. I just, I blew up, I guess, is what I'm going to say. And that's pretty much all I can say about growing up again. But a- as a private citizen, I will be addressing this because I was very offended. And I, I don't want teachers to teach and feel threatened by teaching good things that make good citizens.
Well, I think even in this forum, because it's being recorded and it's going to be out there. It's even scary as an educator to be having this conversation because there are instances that, that the commissioners retaliated against school districts. So I think teachers, administrators, we all have that fear in the back of our heads too.
Yeah, and it shouldn't be like that.
No, but it is like a even question saying what I just said because I'm like, it's on tape.
Yep. Yep, that's, and that's part of the, the calculation for me of what do we say in an even more public forum than this? Is where does that spotlight turn? And, and how do we protect our how do we simultaneously stand up for our staff but also protect them?
And so.
Drawing a target.
Yes.
Full side on our Grantham teachers.
Yes. And I, and I think we can, you know, because we, we have a recorded forum and we have minute, you know, minutes of our meetings, like we can use this platform to express that. And I think it's, there are times when it's okay to sort of like take that beat to say like, okay, but if something was published, you know, in a, in a newspaper or, you know, in a larger form, that's going to draw even more attention that I think is I think the, the stakes do feel really, they are, they are high for educators and administrators right now. And so we, we also have that duty to make sure that we're expressing that support, but we're not making the target bigger. So I think that this is a really important conversation to have. And I think it's important for us to, to keep reiterating these things. I I don't know if it doesn't sound like the next step for us is to make a more public, like a, a letter or a, you know, published response at this point. As a board, yeah. But I do think it does bring up like, where is our responsibility as for a board member and where is our, where, where can we take action if we feel compelled to as individuals?
As citizens, it's our, you know, civic responsibility to speak out on things that we're not comfortable with or no accept.
Yep. Okay. Any other thoughts on this? It is something I am sure we will be talking about again. So thank you. And we have talked about it. And I, and I would just say thank you, Kristen, for being willing to be part of the conversation and Sydney and to the teachers who had the conversation even privately with, with all of you. I really, I know that this is tricky and scary and something that we. Tricky and scary and something that we need to be. Willing to stand up about but also be careful, so. Okay, our next agenda item are our policies, we are doing the second reading and adoption of three policies that we looked at last time. So we have policies E, B, C, G, J, L, C, G, and E, F, A, A. Are there any questions or, um, input heading into the second reading of those policies? Okay, so we need a motion for the second reading, second reading and adoption of E, B, C, G, E, F, A, A. And J, L, C, G somewhere. Second, please, we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Okay, and then our next agenda item is talking about our July board meeting, so this is, sometimes. We use the July meeting as a month to take a meeting off, sometimes we use it as a retreat opportunity, we've done all sorts of things. Um, with that meeting time, because there's not usually as much, um, business that needs to happen then. My, and Sydney had mentioned this previously, and, um, what I would bring to the board is that. We use that July meeting to do some of the deep policy, policy work.
The G bundle.
So we can get out from under the G, the G bundle, so we have a, uh, um. Meeting in July to look at that. Um, and, and then any other work, you know, that, that might come up. Um, oh, and I was gonna, as we think about the July meeting, I was gonna mention, um, Leslie, when you brought up the, like looking at some of the, like, um. Testing and COVID stuff and the, uh, progress monitoring committee is going to meet. Two times before the start of, in the fall, right?
We're waiting once before the June board meeting and then once before school starts next year.
Yep, um, so we've cut those meetings back just because there isn't as much to talk about. And there it was, um, you know, good support from that group in terms of the changes that were made to opening testing up and how we're, you know, doing the testing. That kind of stuff, so. Um, so that's the, the plan at this point for July would be to do that sort of like deep dive into the G. Policy section and get that off of our, um, plate for the time being. Any thoughts on that or any other suggestions for things that folks think that we should look at and to use that July meeting time?
What's the date on that?
Yeah.
July fifth? We might want a different day.
Yeah, yeah, we can also talk about that. So it sounds like July fifth may not be an ideal meeting date for people.
Yeah, people might get it off from work probably.
Is there a Tuesday in July that would be better for folks? So that would be the fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, or twenty-sixth?
As opposed to later, just saying, I know we're gonna be traveling and. I wanna be available on the twelfth, but the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth.
So you're not available on the twelfth?
I'm not.
Okay. All right, let's look at other times in July. Ed, it sounds like you have the most complicated July, is there a week or a day or a?
It would, I mean.
A moment?
For me, the best piece would be. The. Really the only days that work. It's Monday. Sorry, guys.
It's okay. Those are both open for me. You could do the sixth.
The sixth? The sixth? Now, I, now.
No, okay.
I was saying the fifth, but I can't.
I mean, I.
The twenty-fifth?
I don't have anything. On the fifth.
You don't.
I'm sure it can be that. What's the possibility of having a remote option? We have to have a coin, right?
Stand, yeah, we have to have a form in person, and then we could.
You can remote people in and just. Only if you want them to vote.
Can't make the sixth, right?
They're talking the fifth now.
We're back to the fifth, we've come back to the second.
Full circle.
Yeah. Brendan's right, right at the four on the sixth. Could you, were, are you available on the fifth? Is that day work? Let's keep it on the fifth then, let's keep the fifth, it seems like that can work either for people to come in, in person, or maybe. We'll have at least three that can come on the fifth. Okay, perfect, all right, we'll keep it there.
How about Sydney?
I'm good.
All right, so we'll keep it there. All right, and anything else that folks think is something that would be worth? The use of that time that we sometimes have a little bit more flexibility with for the July meeting? Yes, you certainly do. Okay, all right, so we'll plan to do. Lots of policy. And maybe we'll like. Have dessert or something. Sometimes we do something delicious in July.
I think I bring, um, Woodstock Farmer's Market usually.
You have, you have done that.
Is that what you were thinking about?
No, but you just reminded me. I'm gonna be distracted for the rest of the night. All right, excellent, perfect, so we'll finalize the, the agenda and plans for that.
What are we doing, the first reading through?
First three letters. Yes, so it'll be a whole pile of, what is G?
So G is gonna be, um, first, I will tell you, there's a lot of updating that is needed and. G is all, um, employment, um, policy, so it's gonna be all of our personnel policies.
So we will need snacks, is what you're saying. Yes, okay, all right, excellent. Um. All right, our next agenda item is the principal's report, so. Uh, thank you for your report, anything that you would like to add or highlight?
We are now up to two hundred seventy-five students.
Okay.
So I think. The last one before this one, we said, we won't get anymore this year. And then we did, um, so two seventy-five, it's.
It's mind boggling.
School is amazing right now because the weather's changed, people are happy, people can actually, like I hugged people when. It's just, it's a really positive environment and it's, everyone's happy, things are opening up. The STEM fair, if you were able to go, was absolutely awesome and amazing, the sixth graders worked so hard. And were so articulate, um, they did a great job. And then we had the Grantham Get Fit Three K, which was super fun, lots of people participated, and that was put on by. Brenda and the Wellness Committee. But I think everyone, students, staff, families are really appreciating the, the things we're opening up and we can be together and do things. Uh, it's changing the field, so it's nice.
And I want to add, we had a hundred and sixty-two people register for the three K. And that was like with three weeks notice, not even.
It was really fun.
And like Sydney said, we are planning for June fourteenth evening and I'm thinking it's gonna have a lot of people there.
Yeah, it'll be fun, yeah. Any questions, Krista? Principal?
Just happy that you can get a nice happy end of the school year, it's been a while.
It's fun to see like field trips happening and that kind of stuff.
The kids are so funny, they're like, they don't know what to do.
Yeah.
It's really fun.
Yeah, and there's some like. Would it, have the first graders ever been on a field trip before?
That's wild.
Right? And it's funny because teachers forget what to do too, because like I don't remember what paperwork I have to fill.
It's great. All right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, superintendent, report, anything that you would like to highlight or add to it?
Just a couple of highlights, um, I'm very excited that our fifth grade, Mrs. Becca and Mrs. Berger have won the. Fifteen hundred dollar New Hampshire Fish and Wildlife Grant, um, and that will be a rain garden as part of our new playground project, so. Um, they're already working with the liaison from New Hampshire Fish and Wildlife, and so that's gonna be pretty exciting, so it'll be next year's fifth graders. And it will probably go into their sixth grade year because it'll be a, a long process. Um, and, um, SE group, our playground, um, design engineers are already very excited about the rain garden and figuring out the best places for it, et cetera. Um, I do want to just, um, unfortunately have a little bit of a realistic moment about playground construction, so. I did put this in my board report that everything is slower than usual, which I don't think is any surprise to anybody who's tried to have any work done on anything. Um, but we will need to be realistic that if phase one does not happen this summer, meaning that we don't find a contractor to. Um, to work with us, that all, the entire project will just be one phase the summer after. But I will continue at least to try, so I don't want to give up hope yet, we're still hoping that somebody will pick it up and fit us in and. Um, and if for some reason it doesn't happen, we will still focus on the pavilion, at least because the pavilion is already built. So we will focus on, you know, getting all that done, but, you know, it's just, it's, it's just, we have an aggressive timeline. During a time where everything is more delayed than usual, so, you know, we're looking at not just the engineering, but the permitting. Because we are, uh, because of ten feet, we're going through all of the shoreline permitting, et cetera, et cetera, so, you know, there's no guarantee it. At when everything's gonna come back and get the green money. Um, haven't given up hope yet, though. And then I did want to point out just two more things is. Just things to keep an eye on at the state level, and I did tell you that the DOE's changed its name to the NHED. So a couple of things are, there's a revised, um, minimum standards going in, that's really gonna be significant, and it's something that the board should keep an eye on. There is apparently about seventy-seven pages cut from the minimum standards and a full draft. I don't think has been released, but there are groups that are working on side by side comparisons, so we're gonna be keeping an eye on that. Which is everything that we, that's what we, those are our three O sixes, that's everything that we live by in terms of minimum standards for. School and education, and then, um, the Parents' Bill of Rights, I don't know if you saw some of those coming, so that also legislatively is something that. We're gonna be keeping our eyes on, I think there are still eighty-four bills that are like somewhere in process, so. Um, normally I'd be giving you some updates on some things that are settled yet, but honestly, things aren't settled at this point. There's lots of committees of conference that are coming up in the next couple of weeks. And then finally, just, um, again, you don't have to take action, but just for transparency and to see if you have any objection. Um, I'm working with a group, um, and with reaching higher in New Hampshire, we're trying to get. Um, up to thirty New Hampshire education organizations to do one. Big huge survey and data collection to really look at educators leaving education and if it's all right with you. And it's no cost to the district if we use our district survey monkey account to put that out there. It would be nice if, there's a lot of people who are interested in it, and it would be nice if everybody can look at the same data and come to. Um, some really good conclusions instead of having different. People fill out all different surveys all over the place with thirty different groups, so hopefully it'll work.
Thank you, it's interesting to see.
Can I circle back around?
Sure.
I totally forgot all my days kind of melded together, so, um, I want to thank you for the teacher appreciation breakfast that you provided to staff, it was really nice. I think the staff had a great week, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Brenda emailed me and was like, here's your plan, sound good? I was like, yep.
And thank you, Sydney.
Like I did a great job coming up with that plan, I didn't do anything. Brenda's the best.
I think, uh, teachers felt very appreciated, there was a lot of good stuff going on that week. I know, I was at the school today and I thank you for the appreciation.
Parent-teacher group did a lot of like fun things too, you know, which kind of all like.
Yeah.
Married into everything and it was, it was good, we had some highlights of some of the things that went.
They went around to everywhere.
Yeah.
And got gift cards and gift baskets, and then, um, they gave everyone six tickets to put their name on, and you could put your. Six tickets in any cup you want, yeah, and then they pulled them out and so. I got twenty-five dollars in gas, which was pretty nice.
Did your kids ask for it?
No, I got it.
Sorry for.
She used it already. They collected, um, like cards from kids and families, like there, you could send in a card or a, you know, note. And they collected, you know, they had a, they collected supplies.
Really, really.
They did.
And for Cinco de Mayo, which was the day that, you know, the breakfast was done. So Sydney put together these Cinco de Mayo bags with little, um. Chips inside and, you know, tortilla chips and guacamole and like did these bags with all these little stickers on them and. And then bueno.
Little bueno.
And, you know, while we're on the subject, Mrs. Reed individually sewed every staff member a lavender eye pillow for relaxation. It was a good week.
That's great.
It was fun, it was a really fun.
And this is, um, Nurses Appreciation Week, so if you've seen Mrs. Islander.
And we have a banner hanging up on the playground.
And it matches the other banner so nicely.
If she wore her cape and scepter around school for a while.
Somebody asked me today or yesterday, how long we get to keep the blue ribbon flags up, I was like forever.
There was one student, I have to say, who followed Mrs. Islander around with her cape and crown and scepter the entire afternoon. Yes, she wanted it.
All right, our next agenda item is the consent agenda, so any, um, questions or changes to the consent agenda? Okay, all right, so we need a motion to, um, approve the consent agenda. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Okay, we do have a non-public session tonight, um, are, are we doing, do we have a public, uh, um, vote? When we come back?
We do have a public vote.
Okay, yeah, so when we come back into the public session, we're just gonna be doing, um, a vote and then adjourning the meeting. Will we come back into? Zoom, yeah, because we'll record, so the same link will open back up.
I'm just gonna mute and stop the video.
Okay, yeah, perfect, so, um, let's see, we should give a, how, how long? How long are we? So, okay, so let's say, so we're gonna come back into public session by, um, let's say we're gonna do eight thirty?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so public session will resume at eight thirty for the public vote and then adjournment. Anyone who's with us, you are welcome to rejoin us at eight thirty if you'd like, otherwise, our next board meeting is June seventh. Um, and we need a vote or a, yeah, we need a motion to enter non-public and what's our student matter, student matter? We're entering non-public, we need a vote or a motion to enter non-public for a student matter, so. Motion from Leslie and a second from Ed, and we need a roll call for this, so Nancy. Here, just, yeah, yep, Leslie. Denise?
I.
Brittany, I. All right, so we're entering non-public at eight twenty. And we will. Non-public are.
Yes.
Yeah.
Randy, can you shut the door on your way out?
Is there anything that has to happen within the section that says we're in a public meeting? Is there anything that has to happen within the section that says we're doing a public meeting tape? What, that's just.
You don't have to do that.
Okay, I have a tape.
Yeah.
And we're, and I know we're recording too, but sometimes if that doesn't work, you know, we have something.